Welcome to April 8, 2025, City Council meeting, please. Roll call.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor Potam McHurle?
Here.
Councilmember Lando?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
Here.
Approve of the revised agenda, please.
Move approval of the agenda as revised.
Second.
More changes, discussion, a distinction, not see none. We have agenda, special presentation for Mental Health Awareness Month, Mr. Klobuchar.
Mr. Mayor.
How's your eyes today?
I have my.
That is my.
Outstanding dollar store reading glasses. Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2025. Whereas, mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being. It affects how we think, feel, and act. It also affects how we handle stress, relate to others, and make choices. And whereas, mental health is important for our individual well-being and vitality, as well as that of our families, communities, and businesses. And whereas, nearly one in five American adults will have a diagnosable mental health condition in any given year, and more than 42.5 million U.S. adults live with anxiety disorder, the most common mental health condition in America. And whereas, May 1 through May 31, 2025, is recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month. Mental Health America's 2025 theme is Turn Awareness into Action, which celebrates the progress we've made in recognizing the importance of mental health and provides challenges to turn understanding into meaningful steps towards change. And whereas, Oakland County Community Health Network, OCHN, joins our national partners in promoting this year's Turn Awareness into Action campaign. And whereas, mental health management ensures that individuals can focus on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society while promoting diversity, inclusion, and acceptance. And whereas, improved systems of care for vulnerable populations, access to non-emergent and crisis services, advanced integrated physical and behavioral health care, along with provider relations, help to fortify services coordinated by OCHN. And whereas, OCHN and its service provider agencies are committed to inspiring hope, empowering people, and strengthening communities. So, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Hazel Park hereby recognizes May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month. The City of Hazel Park calls upon our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, faith-based organizations, and schools to recommit our state to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness to promote recovery and a higher quality of life.
So move. Moves us to civic announcements. Anyone for civic announcements? In the public, City Council? Seeing none, moves to public discussion. Public discussion is now open. Anyone have any public discussion they want to mention? Seeing no, public discussion is now open. If you want to speak, if you can come up to the microphone, give your name and address, please.
Name is Paul Bond. I own the building at 976 East Ten Mile. My complaint is, you guys opened it up to a lane and took away the parking lane. My building was designed to have parking out front. So now that you got a moving lane, where do I park my cars for customers and my, you know, and the people that work for me? So I'm having a problem there. They sent out a letter telling no one to park out front. I've abided by it as much as I can, but the guy to the west of me has a towing company in there, and he's subleasing, by the way, and he has a tow company, he's parking their trucks out front 24 hours a day. So I'm having to face a wall when I'm trying to get into traffic out of my shop with these limos. So I'm worried about an accident that's going to happen because you have a thorough lane. I don't have the uneasement of a parking lane to scoot out and get into traffic. Is there somebody could tell me why they put this lane in there and what can be done about this?
I believe that was in about a county, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's a county road, and the decision was made to create a left-turn lane there for safety purposes, and they made the decision to do that.
The left-turn lane's not a problem. It's the right lane that we had on the curb side was a parking lane.
Well, in order to create the left-turn lane, what they did was they eliminated the parking lane. There was a parking lane on one side of the street, and I lived there. It was not really all that well-used. It may help you for visibility, and if you're having problems with the vehicles that are next to your business obstructing your view, we can take a look at that and see where they're parking, because that is a problem and an issue.
Well, I talked to the guy next door, and when I talked to him when this first happened several months ago, he basically started parking more there. So basically, I guess the attitude without really asking them is, don't tell me what to do.
Well, I think we will probably have some attention that we pay to that because we are aware of that problem. Amanda Mason's been working with the Oakland County Road Commission, and we're probably going to put up some barriers there to prevent that kind of parking that creates visibility hazards, and that's one of the reasons why we're going to be doing this.
So what do we do about parking for our businesses and the help and stuff like that?
Again, like I said, you should have parking in the rear, okay? That parking lane was very rarely used.
Yeah, but it'd help when you wanted to get out of your driveway and the traffic.
Yeah, for getting out, yeah, and like I said.
And it allowed us to park out front because there was no moving traffic to worry about.
To pull out there. But again, like I said, the decision was made for safety purposes, and that's now a much busier intersection with the Ashley Capital Building there to create the left-turn lane.
But you're taking my parking away for the help out front.
But it's a county decision. So we'll take a look at what we can do to make sure that you have sufficient visibility over there, that you can pull your.
All right, well, I mean, because I told the city about him to let him know, and nothing's been done about it.
Okay, well, again, I'm not aware of it. I'm aware of it now. We'll see what we can do. I don't have a quick solution for you on this, but we will take a look at it. We are aware of the visibility issue.
The problem, what it is, is I got cars going out, you know, in the prom season coming up next week, pretty much Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So if he doesn't move this thing, I'm faced with that issue, and what happens when his, he pretty much got a wall in front of me, and I can't see a car coming.
We have the same, the same issue in other places there on Ten Mile that we're aware of. That's why we're looking at trying to create some barriers or things like that to ensure there's visibility.
Really, bro, you guys wouldn't have put the turn lane in there?
Do you guys, who's you guys? It's not our road. That's the Oakland County Road Commission.
Which I'll be talking to them next because it's causing a hazard for me. Okay, I get what they tried to do.
Right.
Great idea, but you can't have, take away that lane that I need to be able to see traffic and be able to park out in front of my business. Keep in mind, this building was built in 1950, so their concept of building it was parking out in front. That's why my whole front is paved, as well as a lot of other buildings on Ten Mile. Our, the concept, the way the thing was built and okayed by the city was to park out front. Now, in 2024, '25, whatever, they want to change the game and tell you what to do with your parking. It's hard to do that, because you're telling me to reconstruct everything in my building. It's just not possible. I know you're aware, and I know you're going to try, but I'm just telling you what I'm faced with because I don't want to be here in a month or a week with an accident that happens, and somebody's dead out of it because of what they did.
And I do not have a magic wand to wave to create an immediate solution for it.
I got you.
But we'll take a look at it, and we'll see what we can do.
All right. I appreciate it, but I'm just stressing on, this is a very difficult situation. I see something happening.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Paul, you said 976 East Ten Mile?
Yep.
976 East Ten Mile.
976 East Ten Mile is the building that I own.
Okay, thank you.
Don't plan on going nowhere. I'm here for another 20, 30 years. You know, I hope the city can work with me or the county, whatever we can do to solve a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public discussion from the audience? Seeing no one, there's a public discussion. Consent agenda 1 through 11?
Your Honor, I move approval of consent agenda items 1 through 11.
Second.
A discussion on any items from 1 through 11? A dissension? Consent agenda passes. It moves us to administrative reports. We see none. Boards and commissions. Anybody have any ideas for boards and commissions? Have we looked at those? We have some recommendations here. Uh, let's see. To reappoint the respective boards and commissions, currently seated members in terms expiring April and May of this year. Main Street, Hazel Park, James Finkley, Lisa Mayo, terms expiring 2028. Motion to reappoint.
So moved.
Second.
A dissension, may add additions, deletions, dissension. Hearing none. Sign authority, Edward Klobuchar, Sine Pappacian, Tim Young, terms expire 2028.
So moved.
Second.
Changes, discussion, distinction, none. Board, Anya Ware, to the term expiring 2028.
So moved.
A dissension, discussion?
That's giving somebody else.
Oh, that's a second.
All right, I got you. Hearing none. Thank you for your consideration. James, thank you, James. Any other boards who want empty seats we have to fill? We're supposed to have a little list this time?
What's that? I do not. I've just got these here for you.
Thanks, Penny. We can have a list of some of the seats that are currently vacant and what the terms are, please.
We can.
We'll run it short.
Have we put out on our socia ls, just like a call for?
We do that periodically, so.
I haven't been online lately, so.
It takes two old business in the old business we need to discuss. No, old business.
I wanted to bring up the discussion that I had earlier today with Ed Klobuchar and ask Tim Young if he might come up. Sorry, Tim. I warned you via email about the.
Compost.
Compost. My brain was saying mulch, and I'm like, it's not mulch. About the compost and the change in compost. I had a phone call with Ed earlier today that felt was really productive, and I know Tim was being wrangled into that conversation.
Sure. Yeah, Mr. Klobuchar and I spoke, and we're going to look into getting it again. I mean, there is going to be a cost to the city to get it because that's the changes they made. The question will be is, where are we going to store it? Currently, we've used the Kennedy Park location because of its easy access for loading and unloading, even loading and unloading the big trucks. We really don't have a secure location. Compost is pretty much, pretty messy product, so nobody's really going to want it on their properties. So if we have to, we'll just drop it back in Kennedy Park if that turns out to be the location. Hard thing is, we can't regulate who's coming in and out of there, so maybe we can put some signage up or something just to kind of help warn people that it's for the residents.
Yeah, we're, we're thinking of ways, again, obviously, we're not going to probably be making as frequent of drops there with the compost. What we want to make sure we're doing is hopefully deterring landscaping companies who come in and scoop all that stuff up, and they leave basically nothing for the residents. So we want to make sure that we're giving our residents a chance to take advantage of this program as much as we can. So looking for a secure area, the problems are just aren't very many.
Well, how long is the compost time? Go for three weeks, four weeks?
They'll continue to make it through the season, so, you know, you can get it throughout, so.
How long do we usually provide it? Sorry, listen.
I think we usually just did in the spring.
Right.
We'd get a couple loads, and then when it would run low, and if we noticed it was getting used up, we might have ordered.
Well, my suggestion maybe, if we can do it before Memorial Weekend, we use four weeks over behind Rex Center and.
And I want to do it at Rex Center. Too much going on there.
Before that.
Or no.
One of my, yeah, but it's still dirty after. I, I, with Ed on that, since it literally is a pile of dirt. I had sent over a suggestion to maybe use one of our community gardens as an access point, since we already have gardeners there. It's fenced in.
And that's kind of what we did at Kennedy, because Kennedy is one of our community garden locations. It may end up over there again by default. Well, what we're all trying to do, and I know everybody's trying to find a way, Rex Center is monitored a little bit, but not 24/7, where we could create some access, so we make sure that it's our residents that are primarily using, you know, the compost.
Since it's costing us more, yeah.
And we're not subsidizing landscapers because that's unfair to our taxpayers and our residents and everybody else. So we want to make sure that our residents get a chance to use it. Not that it's, frankly, not that it's the greatest compost, but.
The new product will be much.
Yeah, we had that discussion, too.
New product will be much improved.
Yeah, it'll be.
Will we?
Yeah, it's going to be, well, this will be a professional company. They actually sell it, so it's going to be a little bit more additives into.
Right, so, okay.
Better product.
So it's upgrading quality. Very good.
But it's going to take a while, though. They got to get through, if I'm correct, they've got a large supply of the stuff we've always got. Until that's gone, that new product probably won't be available for public as we think it is, so.
Well, I just want to thank both you and Ed for hearing me out today and for reading my emails, because I, the more I thought about it after last meeting, I was a little disappointed, and then I went and looked at all the other cities around us, and they were figuring out different ways to kind of manage this better. And similarly, they were requiring, they were moving it into an area that was more secured so that they could require proof of residency, and I agree with that if we can find a place to do that, and I think that is a way to cut costs on our end, but also continue to provide the service for our residents. So I appreciate you guys.
Yeah, and we're going to continue to think.
Be all right, too.
And I encourage all five of you to continue to think as well, and we'll think on the DPW.
Just fencing it in with temporary fencing and put a key code.
That's temporary.
And have a resident call in and get the key code of the day from online or something, and they have to register that they're a resident. There are. I like Tim's idea about a sign, but what about possibly a camera like we have at Scout Park?
What?
Camera, camera like we have at Scout Park.
And then what are we going to send police to give people a ticket? I mean, that's so weird.
We just want to try to be.
We have to pass an ordinance.
Or police are under arrest.
Right. That seems a bit, you know, seems a bit extreme.
Well, the, the stuff went from being excess.
Right.
Right.
We had compost. We had so much, we had to give it back to the cities.
Right.
We had so much, couldn't get rid of it. You had to take it back. Now, you know, this product is going to have a considerable cost to it.
Right.
I don't know what we were paying before, because Tom was always dealing with that, but hauling and stuff.
Free, you know, it was free, free service, you know, so.
Big pile out there, it was probably going to be $1,200.
But even, even Bob over at Saco was saying they, they would do it, and people would show up for about the first couple of weeks, and then he's stuck with this pile sitting on the property that nobody else wants anymore, and then Eagle shows up and starts nosing around on all these piles of dirt everywhere, so.
Yeah. So it still is available free, I believe, for the residents to go out there to school and go under and pick it up.
Yeah, and I think, obviously, we're not going to bring the same amount as before. We want to try to make it available to the residents so they have an opportunity to utilize it, but we're going to try to make sure, it's like I said, that it's for the residents and not for every landscaping company.
Because we, we did get a lot of feedback online about people being upset that they see, you know, landscaping trucks and contractor trucks coming over and loading up and taking it, and then when they go to get some, there isn't any. So I definitely agree that we can find a better solution.
Especially if there's a cost.
Especially if there's a cost, right? Because the goal would be to minimize access to people that shouldn't have access to it while using the taxpayers' money responsibly to continue to provide the resource that they expect us to provide. So I appreciate you guys so much. Thank you.
Thank you. It goes to new business.
I mean, you might as well just stay up there.
I'm sorry.
I was like, Tim, you might as well just stay up there because he's going to tap talk about Earth Day.
Tim, Tim, can you come back, Tim? Andrea would like you to talk about Earth Day, please.
Oh, yeah, I was going to bring that up. So, yes, Earth Day is scheduled for April 26. That's a Saturday between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., so we will have the paper shredder there for anybody that wants to bring up documents they, they want to get rid of safely. Same as last year, of course, we'll have the electronics drop-off, scrap metals, old paint, household cleaners, that kind of stuff. Pretty successful last year. Last year was a really good turnout. If the weather's holding, we'll, we'll be in the, open out in the area. If we do have bad weather, we'll push everything into the garage. So we'll still have the event whether it's raining or not.
Tim, did you mention electronics as well?
Yeah, yeah. A lot of people brought up old TVs, old computers.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so. Batteries, yes, yes.
I know you're excited about that.
I got my bag of batteries. My dishwasher soap container of batteries.
Of course, there'll be hot dogs and such there, and then the park cleanup is the same day, so when, when that group finishes off, they usually end up over at our building for lunch, so.
Goes to, any other old business? Hang out, Tim. Go ahead. New business.
New business. So recently, hopped onto the Cork Board for the first time in probably weeks and saw a lively discussion about solicitors visiting our, our homes. Something that we all enjoy. And because I have an abundance of free time, I was going through our solicitation ordinances and our handbills and comparing them against nearby communities, and I identified some areas for improvement, so I know I did let some members of staff know. But I move to create an administrative report that incorporates some of the following. One, to change the allowed hours to begin at 9:00 a.m. instead of 8:00 a.m., which is, puts us in more in line with surrounding communities. Increase the license cost from $100 to $250, to the extent that that's allowed. Specify that a no soliciting sign prohibits solicitation in the same way that the existing ordinance calls out. A sign that says no handbills and no advertisement signs is enforceable, so making a no soliciting sign similarly enforceable, as well as establish a do not knock registry. This is something that many nearby communities have, including Troy, Madison Heights, and Royal Oak, and it would function similarly to a do not call registry in that it would just be a database that solicitors would essentially have access to, and it would include a list of addresses that they are not allowed to contact unless they're members of like a protected group of people, think of like political canvassers and the sort.
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
I'd like to second that motion. Oops, sorry. I don't have a thing on my, I'd like to second that motion.
Yeah.
A motion, we have a second. Any questions, discussion, dissension?
My only discussion is just a reminder that political candidates and political mailers, political flyers are not included in no soliciting, just a reminder.
Religious organization.
Religious organizations, yeah.
There's a couple of exceptions.
But everybody else.
Motion passes. Any other new business from council? Hearing none, we move to communications from the department heads. Any department heads in the back want to come up and volunteer? Not too bad. How you doing?
I just want to remind the community, it's fire pit season. Please, if you're doing fire pits in the city, put them in approved container. Make sure they're 10 feet from your house. Make sure you have a garden hose or something to put them out, and do know the rule is, if we show up, if a neighbor complains, then we're putting it out for you. That's all I got.
And you're getting a bill. And you're getting a bill.
We don't bill you for it, but just so you know, because they always get upset when we show up, if a neighbor calls and complains, we show, we have to put it out. That's all I got.
Also, no, no burning leaves or garbage in there.
Yeah. That's all I got.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Tim?
Welcome back.
Hello, everybody.
Hello again.
I just wanted to go on what Mr. Lando said about the solicitors. Our city employees for the DPW and Water, they all are in uniforms, and they will have IDs on them if they happen to be knocking at your door, and you're, you're curious who they are, you can ask them to present their ID. If they happen to forget it, we can get a foreman or a supervisor to come out if we have any reason to be at, at your properties, so nobody needs to be concerned about that. If anybody's staying there from the Water Sewer Department, hey, well, let's see your ID, or if we're from the DPW, let's see your ID. So we'll, we make sure that they have them with them. I'm up here tonight just to, to thank my crew for their dedicated, hard work over the last month. We've done quite a bit of work around our building and such, and I wanted to thank Brian Mix and Mike Rogers. They finished off painting a, a area in our building that's going to become a future file room for city records in the future. Our mechanics, Glenn Priest, and our new hire, Bradley Maliki, are really taking that division up a notch, so I'm really pleased with how they've taken over and taken ownership of that, that division there. And then, of course, to our foremans, Rick Castleman and Nolan Twiman, they're doing a fine job keeping up with the demands of the city and the demands we are putting on them, and they're both fairly new at their jobs, but they're, they're handling it well, and I'm very proud of all the crew, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for that update, Tim.
Amanda Mason?
Hi, y'all.
Hello.
Here is Code, because we're in that season again, like I was last month. Just wanted to, also checked out the Cork Board recently, and there was also a lively debate about whether or not we were putting people in jail for grass. And to be clear, we are not. We are required by law to publish the maximum possible penalty that one could face for a grass and weeds ticket. Theoretically, you could be charged with a misdemeanor and face up to 90 days in jail or a $500 fine. However, we also have a civil infraction for the same offense, which is the ticket that we give you. And so although we are required to publish that, unless you are an absolute slum landlord who has had multiple tickets, risked the ire of the city, the city manager calling you, getting several tickets, basically, probably the Cork Board itself also being aware of whatever property this is, you are not in danger of having a misdemeanor grass and weeds ticket be issued to you. You will know with many warnings if that is something you would be facing. However, it is a no notice situation, other than the publication, for the civil infractions. Everyone knows when they need to mow their lawn. Again, we're usually not out there till it's three or four mows in, you're knee-high, so those you will not get a phone call for, you're not going to get somebody necessarily knocking on your door. It will be abundantly obvious that you have passed the point where you are subject to getting a civil infraction for that, which is a fine that is set by the court, and it's around $200, I believe, but is flexible with respect to what your income level is. That's between you and the judge. But just to be clear, we don't want to put anyone in jail. We don't want any of those things. If you have any issues, if you have any concerns, we hear about people all the time after the fact who said, you know, my lawnmower broke down, my mom was in the hospital, all kinds of things. If you call up and you let us know and you talk to us, we can work with you, we can see what's going on. We, we take note of addresses where something's going on, you know, you're not going to necessarily get an exemption the whole summer. We also have our senior tour program if you have, you know, qualifications for that. So please, by all means, if you have something that's going on where you have a concern, call us, talk to us, we are more than happy to work with you. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Hamel?
Oh, you're just making him come up.
As for volunteers, I just told one or two of you, we're just going to go down the road here.
I wanted to be invited. Actually, a couple of things I wanted to mention. First of all, regarding the solicitors, just to make it clear, utility companies that show up, whether it's DPW, Detroit Edison, Consumers Power, you're, if they just show up at your door and they want to try and come inside, don't let them in. I mean, especially even if they're showing ID, if you have any concerns at all, call the police department. Give us a call, let us come out, we'll verify. Generally speaking, Detroit Edison and Consumers Power is not going to want to come into your home. So if you have any doubts, don't let them in, call the police department. That being said, even salespeople, people that want to, you know, they have some new gadget or they want to do some construction and they just come into your door and, you know, I've got a great deal, let me come in, and my advice is, don't let them in. Anyone that's just coming to your door uninvited, don't let them in. And you don't have to. And whatever deal that they're trying to sell you, it's never, it's not a good deal. Another issue that I just wanted to bring up is the month of April is texting awareness month. No texting and driving. It's a danger to the public, it's a danger to yourself. You can go 50 miles an hour down the roadway and look down, and the next thing you know, you're crashing into something. So pay attention to that. It's a $100 fine for the first offense, it's a $250 fine for a second, along with a point on your driving record. And the third point that I wanted to make is there is a new law regarding child restraint systems that went into effect April 2nd. Just infants that are, or infants to two years old, you need to be in a rear-facing child seat. Two to five years of age, front-facing child restraint. And a five to eight-year-old, or you also have to be, reach the height of four feet nine inches before you don't have to use a booster seat any longer. Civil infraction for violation of those is a $130 fine. So make sure you get some car seats for your kids. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. James Finkley, anything? We want to have you come up and speak. We appreciate it very much, sir.
You thought, you thought.
I tried. I would just say we have a couple of new businesses that may be of interest to people. Health and Soul Cafe, 21670 John R., and Cos Cara Coffee Roasters at 21818 John R. So new coffee shop and a new health food place.
Thank you.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Lacey Christensen. You have nothing? Okay. And of course, Jared.
Hello, hello, how is everyone?
Good.
Hi. So about a week ago, I notified the city of Hazel Park that this would be my last city council meeting. I know, very sad. I am honored to have worked with you guys for almost 10 years now. You know, I've learned a lot. You know, when I applied and went through my application process for my new employer, all they had was accolades for the city of Hazel Park and employees that we have, especially Ed Klobuchar, the main man right there. All they wanted to talk about was how great our department heads are, the work that we've done. They really like the way we handle Memorial Day. And all I could say was it was thanks to Ed, our team, Lacey, Finance Director of the Year back there. So I just want to say I'm truly honored to have worked with you guys for as long as I have. Nine years ago, I met Ed at a Promise Zone luncheon at Bill Hitchcock's place. And then fast forward almost 10 years, and here I am, going into my 30s, moving away. So it's been an honor, and I really appreciate it. I think it's professional for me to let everyone know, but feel free to reach out, I'll be around, so thank you.
Can you share?
Yeah, so I'm just going 10 minutes east, I'm going to Warren. So I accepted a position as Director of Human Resources for the city of Warren. So a lot of, a lot of union stuff will be coming up, so I'm excited. But I think between the work I've done with Ed and Lacey, the training they both provided me, I think I'm ready for the new conquest. I think it's important for employees to recognize when growth needs to be happening within not just their workplace, but themselves. And I think this is a really opportune time for me to do that. So I appreciate and thank every single one of you who have helped me get to this point, and I look forward to continuing our relationships in a positive manner. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I miss you.
Absolutely.
City Attorney, you have any comments?
I'm going to miss Jared. All is well, very busy, thank you.
Mr. Klobuchar?
Yeah, I have a lot of comments today. First, I'm going to start out with Jared Gajos. I love this kid. We've had him as an intern, I think since he graduated from high school. And he's grown up with us, and he's like a member of my family. He's extremely smart. I've watched him grow. This is a huge opportunity for him to be an HR Director for the third largest city in the state of Michigan. And I'm so very proud of him, and I think that he's going to do an outstanding job. But as I told him, I will miss him every day forever because he has become such an important part of our office and our administrative team that I just can't say enough about the young man. And I know he's going to do great things, and this is just one more step in the amazing journey that will be the life of Jared Gajos. So I thank you for your service to our city. You will always be part of the Hazel Park family, and I want you to know how much we love you, so. He's zooming in. Yeah, Jared's a theater guy, man, you're not going to get him. You're not going to get him. So again, you'll always be part of the family, so. Very good. Congratulations to our state representative, Mike McFall. I had the opportunity to present him the legislator, the Michigan Legislator of the Year Award on behalf of the Michigan Municipal League for the outstanding work that he did on getting the Ground Emergency Medical Transport Bill passed that will enable our fire department and the neighboring fire departments around here that operate emergency medical systems to receive important reimbursement monies from the federal government. And these are monies that were left on the table here, the state of Michigan, for many years because the state just didn't want to administer the program. So his legislation requires that that be done, and he richly deserves it, and I'm glad that the city of Hazel Park was chosen to present that prestigious award. There'll be a tree planting on Saturday, May 3rd, with Relief of Michigan. I'm making this announcement for Serene Papaki, our Rec Director, and I thank her for arranging this. We plan to plant 20 trees at Tusky Park located at Tucker and Vassar here in the city of Hazel Park, and that'll be at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, May 3rd. Show up 15 minutes early if you want to eat doughnuts. So would love to have as many volunteers and participants as possible. The more people that show up, the faster we get the trees planted. So I thank her for that. And I will remind everybody that we go to Lansing every year with the Michigan Municipal League because there's always important things that are happening at the state level that impact cities. In the United States, there's no mention of cities in the Constitution. All cities everywhere in this country are creatures of state government in some form or fashion. And what happens in Lansing is critically important to us. As I say, every meeting, Michigan's system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken. And we go to Lansing, and we make sure we have an aggressive lobbying presence up there to make sure that we can keep an eye on those things that have a potential to benefit us or sometimes very negatively impact us. So we're going to continue to be having a big presence in Lansing, and I think that our presence on some issues have paid off because we've turned out to be right about things that the Michigan Municipal League are now saying, yeah, Ed, we wish we'd have listened to you. So I think that's a good thing for us to do that, and I thank every member of my council that showed up. All five of them are active in terms of talking to our legislators and keeping them informed about what our community's needs are. So beyond that, once again, I will wish Jared the best of luck. We'll try to get him back here to give him a resolution, I think, at a future meeting. And again, proud of the fact that other communities recognize the good work that we do here and prepare our people to be leaders everywhere across the state of Michigan. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilperson Sullivan?
Okay, okay.
You're welcome.
Thanks. I also wanted to congratulate Mike McFall on his Legislator of the Year Award. Attending Capcom and watching Ed present him with that award was really, really a testament to our community, our city, the excellence that we create here in the city, and the tools that we put in place to help people become and fulfill the things that we need for our community. So it was great. Jared, I'm so sad, but I'm also so proud of you. Jared and I attended the CPM certification course through Saginaw Valley State University together, and it was a lovely experience. I learned so much from him during that progress, or during that program, I mean. And I just, I think you are fantastic, and wherever you land, I know you'll be successful because you are, if nothing, resilient, but also brilliant. You are a fantastic asset, and our city is going to, our community will definitely miss you. So I'm sad, and I might cry. I wanted to remind people that the Hazel Park Juneteenth Scholarship is still open, and also the applications for Hazel Park Art Fair are currently open. The applications for Juneteenth Scholarship for our high school seniors and juniors closes May 31st, and the art fair application closes April 21st of this year. Both of those applications can be found at H P A R T dot org. I also wanted to remind people that I will be posting tips in the upcoming weeks and months, and I have been already, for supporting native species, tips on attracting wild, wild species. So encouraging lightning bugs, encouraging hummingbirds, the great pollinators that we need to support, encouraging those to come to your yard. So follow me on my socials to get those tips. And I hope to see everybody at the tree planting. I haven't missed one yet. They're one of my favorite things that we do in this community, so I'm very excited to participate in this next one. This will be, what, our eighth one, I think?
Yeah, we've had, we've had quite a few, so.
Very excited.
It's either eighth or ninth.
I love, it might be actually the ninth, you're right. But yeah, so I hope to see everybody there.
Councilperson Londo?
I first met Jared back in 20, gosh, 18 maybe, at a training for use of Narcan. I love that everybody has a different story with Jared, and they're all just like really, really amazing programs and resources that have been conducted in the community, which I really think demonstrates Jared's commitment. Our loss is certainly Warren's gain. You have been an exemplary employee and also just an exemplary person. I remember when there was an opening on this body and I applied, and Jared was the first person I reached out to for advice, for feedback. He's been a consistent sounding board in my life, and grateful that even though you're departing, you're still just a few blocks from me. Congratulations to Representative McFall. A lot of those like trade associations and groups have their Legislative of the Year awards, but honestly, the one from the Michigan Municipal League is the gold standard in my mind.
That is the biggest one in Lansing.
They really are the top-tier organization, and to have him recognized by the MML is just really a great thing for him, as well as for the communities that he represents, and just very, very grateful to call him my legislator. Thank you to this body for the Mental Health Awareness Month Resolution. I've been very public about struggling with mental health since I was in middle school, and having resolutions like these, that really de-stigmatizes it, is just really a phenomenal thing. Grateful for the feedback to my no soliciting ordinance request. Were precluded by state law to just like outright ban it. I would know because I looked into it. So I'm very, very grateful that we can at least strengthen it and make it a little bit easier for our residents. First had the idea from my friend Dave Dickens, who had spoke about how his 82-year-old mother will have people stop by her house. And, you know, while I certainly wouldn't accuse anybody of violating deceptive or unfair trade practices, they are very, very well rehearsed, and they spin a very, very good game. And I think a lot of people will, you know, walk away from an interaction like that and think that, you know, maybe they should take advantage of the service or whatever that was provided. And it really becomes, you know, an effort of like family members or other trusted individuals to, you know, let people know what really is the case. So to have, you know, something like a do not knock registry, I think, is really going to be a great asset for a lot of members of this community. I would like to share that my daughter, Mira May Londo, was born on March 14th. Baby is happy, healthy, adorable, and, you know, my wife was just an absolutely spectacular person, just enduring that and continuing to be an amazing mother to Finn and to Mira, and we're just extremely grateful for all the love we've gotten from members of the community. So Mira, someday you might watch this. I love you very, very much. Welcome to the world. Additionally, a very close friend of mine, Marlon Morton and Catherine Caruso, who are also Hazel Park residents, welcomed their daughter, Ada May Morton, on March 22nd. So very, very exciting to see some new additions to the city of Hazel Park. And that's all I got.
Wonderful, thank you. Councilperson Washington?
It's my turn. Hello, everyone. Thank you to Paul for coming in, sharing his thoughts today on the changes in traffic. I, like I said, county decisions don't necessarily, we don't necessarily have a say in those, so, but thank you, we will look into those and we'll try to help you as much as we can. I do want to reiterate what Luke said about mental health. I also struggle with my own mental health problems, but I think it's very important to keep these resolutions moving forward or, and also breaking down those stigmas, sharing our own stories on our own mental health with our community and being a support for each other. It's, I know myself, since college, that's where my struggle started, but knowing that I have a lot of friends and people that I can speak to when I am struggling is very important. I also want to say congratulations to Mike McFall on his Legislator of the Year. I was not able to see him receive his award, but I'm very proud of him. Jared, I am very proud of you as well. You're going to be missed. I know you're going to be awesome in Warren. I think we met at the fire department event? Yeah, and that was before I was elected, but you're very helpful, very kind, you're a very awesome human being, and I will continue to interact with you. So I'm not too sad about that, but I am sad to lose you in the city of Hazel Park because you are amazing. With the weather changing, I know it's cold and a little chilly today, I want to say just to pay attention to bicyclists that you will see, also rollerskaters, I've seen a few of those on my street, and just kids in general. I don't have a lot of kids on my block, but they do like to ride around, and I was very surprised when I heard them playing outside a couple of weeks ago. So I just want to say just pay attention to those kids on the streets, bicyclists, and I'm sure Bike Club is getting ready to start, and also when you're wearing, when you are biking, please wear a helmet for safety reasons. And I think that's all I got today. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Waciro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, thanks to Tim for bringing all the ideas up about the Earth Day and the parks cleanup. Hope to see everybody out there. It's, the parks, Hazel Park, there's a lot of them, they get, they just need a little touch-up. And I'm really happy to see about Tusky Park, because my buddy and I, Charlie, were standing in his yard looking at Tusky, like recalling how many trees we've seen go down from the storms over the decade. So that's a park that needed it well. Wanted to comment about number, Consent Agenda Number Nine, the police, fire dispatching. This is just another example, the chiefs and all of our staff are using technology to help make our residents safer, enhancing our safety and just, I'm happy to see the technology being used. Congratulations, Jared, you will be missed. I'm not going to go on too much more. You've been great, and it's been nice to see the growth. And we know that, you know, some of our people go, right? They go other places. And congratulations to Mike McFall and his Legislator of the Year. Mike McFall is also going to be our keynote speaker at Thursday's Youth Recognition Banquet, so he'll have some nice things to say there. That's a reminder for all of you, if you haven't seen the invitation yet. And on that note, the youth assistance is, you know, something we try to help the kids and the families and strengthen the community. And so if you love somebody, tell them, and if you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. Thanks for coming out and participating in the democratic process.
Thank you. Well, that's a lot. Thank you. Well, there's a lot said, and I think we can all talk a little more. I'm going to make this as short as I can. I want to say thank you to Mike McFaul, and congratulations to him for all what he has accomplished from starting out here as city councilman, and volunteering on boards and doing different things, and winding up as state representative. It helped represent us in helping us lobby our other legislators up there, as well as our city manager and others, to help protect our funding and also create new legislation to better help our community all the way around. And looking out for the future of how we can be more proactive and more inclusive in also in our environment to help everybody around and be a better person and better people. And that's what we really are here in Hazel Park. It's how we can actually be that, that type of community. And as small as we are, we do set new standards for other cities and the community to follow. We have over the years, in small ways and some, in other ways, bigger ways. And that speaks loads from as small as we really are, two miles square. But we have great staff. We have great people here. And it's, we have great businesses here, longstanding businesses, which we just lost, Hitchcock Realty. It just closed up after 60 years, 70 years here. It's been a long time. We've also lost other big, old businesses here, but we also gained a lot of new businesses, as we just heard, a new coffee shop, new cafes, a new couple, new bars, and other, smaller little venue restaurants. And it's nice to see that there is change on the forefront to help make us balanced again in our community. As far as Jared goes, we're going to miss you, buddy. I watched you hire in here, go to school here before you hired in, and then did the internship, went to college. And it's nice to see the full realm of what is offered out there for young people to grow and fulfill their goals, and also set new goals for themselves for the bright future ahead, my friend. Thank you. Congratulations. I'm going to round of applause for you. Motion to adjourn.
Your Honor, I move that we proceed into executive session to discuss confidential matters of personnel.
Second.
Yes.
I move that we reconvene our regular meeting.
Second.
Your Honor, I move that we accept the recommendations of the city manager as it relates to the sale of vacant parcels.
Support. Any other discussion, dissension here? None? Motion passes. Motion to adjourn.
Your Honor, I move that we authorize the city administration to spend up to $50,000 to purchase a surface lot on South John R.
Second.
I move that we adjourn.
Support.